Actually, give thanks today as we celebrate the spring has finally returned to Ohio. So, we thank you for the signs of life all around us in the budding trees and growing plants. We're thankful, too, for the signs of growth and life in our community as children and parents venture outside to play and work together. And for the visioning of that growth that takes place here tonight. We ask your guidance in this gathering, giving thanks for the men and women who have been called to positions of leadership in this time and place. Walk with us, work through us, so that our neighborhoods and homes are safe, that this community is always one where human beings are treated with integrity, where ideas can be shared and heard respectfully, where our diversity can be seen as a strength when we unite together for the common good of all. This we pray together. Amen.
If any local minister is interested in providing the invocation, please contact Mark Lewis or myself. It's non-nomination specific. We just ask that you be an area minister that's recognized by the state that you reside in as being a minister. Other than that, there's some very, very minimal guidelines. And feel free to contact either of us and we'll get you on the schedule. To start the meeting, I'd ask the clerk to take the roll.
Abrams.
Here.
Menager.
Here.
Grubbs.
Here.
Lewis.
Here.
Dole.
Here.
Maynes.
Here.
Galindo.
Here.
First item on this evening's agenda is approval of the council meeting minutes from April 17th, 2018.
So moved.
Second.
Are there any corrections or additions to the minutes? Noting none, I'll ask for a roll call.
Menager.
Yay.
Grubbs.
Yay.
Lewis.
Yay.
Dole.
Yay.
Maynes.
Yay.
Galindo.
Yay.
Abrams.
Yay.
We have several invited guests and visitors this evening. Like to start off by inviting the William Henry Harrison 8th Grade Junior High School Girls Basketball Team forward for presentation.
Come on, ladies.
That's you.
Don't be shy. I know all of yous.
That's you. Cue to stand up.
So, I'd like you to line up across the front here. So, I believe all thirteen have made this evening correct.
Oh, we're missing one.
We're missing one.
We're missing one.
Well, there were thirteen supposed to make, but one of them had a conflict. So, these twelve girls have been playing basketball together for two years now, and they've got back-to-back undefeated seasons. That's quite a task. They probably have a great career ahead of them in scholastic sports, and I wish them all the best. For each girl this evening, I'm going to read their name off in a moment, but I have a certificate of recognition, and it has their name on it. It says awarded to and their name. 8th Grade Harrison Junior High School Girls Basketball Team, consecutive perfect basketball seasons, and SWOC League Champions. Awarded this first day of May, 2018, and I've signed each certificate. I'm going to call each girl's name, and I'd like you to come over here and receive your certificate. Emily Heimcraitor.
She's the one that's not here. Cassie Schultes.
Roundout, Alyssa White.
Christie, I think you go in the back. We're going to make sure the mayor's in the front.
as kindergartners. So, it's kind of neat to see them grow up and accomplish what they've done these last two years. And I think the one comment I'd like to make is, parents aren't going to like to hear this, but these kids are going to grow up quick, and they're going to get to high school and college, and they're going to be moms someday. And what's going to be exciting is when you pay it back and you become a coach for your children, be the kind of coach that Coach Coyle has been, both Coach Coils and Coach Heim, and all the coaches that you've had that have influenced you. So, that's what we like to see is it to go full circle. So, looking forward to you guys playing basketball in high school.
You know, Mayor, that was a very nicely done ceremony, and I have to share this with you guys because some of you students out there will appreciate this. Fifty years ago, I played on a basketball team that won a state championship over in Price Hill in a CYO league, St. Teresa Parish. And Mayor Gene Ruhlman, who was the mayor of Cincinnati at the time, issued a proclamation in our honor at this dinner they had for us. And we were all thrilled with it, particularly when he got to the last line after proclaiming March 16th, 1968, "St. Teresa Bruin Day in Cincinnati, and I therefore dispense with the obligation of each of you students attending classes on this date." We were like so excited until we walked out and realized it was a Saturday.
So, Mayor, that was very kind of you not to do that to them.
And, Mr. Mayor, what I'll tell you on that is, these girls, when teams went to play them, they knew what they were up against. Some of them played with integrity, some played maybe on the edge, the other teams. They've never lost their integrity. They had not only sportsmanship, in fact, the one who probably lost their cool more than anyone was myself. I got warned by refs probably more than the girls did, so, just being truthful.
Congratulations, lady.
Good job.
That's exciting. Yep.
As a note, I did not excuse you from class tomorrow.
Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Tracy, you have that authority, though.
Hey, you want to say title?
But it's going to be a gorgeous day tomorrow. Come on.
Congratulations, girls. So, next on the agenda, I'd like to skip down one. We have a couple additions to the invited guests. I'd like to invite the Honorable Judge Charles Miller forward. He'd like to introduce himself. He's running to retain his seat this year.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, my name is Charles Miller, and, you know, I was looking forward to being here tonight, just, if you will, for some intergovernmental outreach to a co-equal branch of government. And it's just, it's really a pleasure just to see the community involvement that's here, you know, for all the good things you have going on tonight with the girls and the swearing end and everything else. So, I just have kind of a few things that I just kind of wanted to make sure that everyone is aware of, really about our court and what we do. Because, you know, just specifically, it's so important to kind of understand what happens with the different branches of government. And so, our court, where I'm a judge, is the Court of Appeals. What we do is, we review the work of all of the trial courts in this county. So, any criminal case, any juvenile case, any domestic relations divorce case that someone has an issue with and they want to have it reviewed, they ask us to take a look at it. We're kind of like the replay booth, you know, in baseball. We're not quite as instant, but nonetheless, it's our job to review and make sure that the courts below have done their jobs. And, you know, it's really, really key for us to make sure that we're humble about our work and that we go about making sure that we're, you know, applying the law as it's been passed by legislative bodies. You have your own zoning codes and municipal codes, and, you know, when those come before us, it's important to make sure that the lower courts and that us, that when we're reviewing these things, that we're figuring out what the law means and that we're not trying to impose upon the public our view of what that law should be. And, you know, the way that our court works is a little different than most courts. You think of what you see on TV. You have witnesses, you have a jury. We don't have any of that. We've got a panel of three judges, so it's a bench somewhat like this, a little bit smaller, obviously. And we just have the lawyers that come in and argue their case and their position. You know, we fire some questions at them. They get 15 minutes each side. And, you know, they have that one hearing, and they have the opportunity to submit something in writing, their arguments, and we decide things from there. It's really an interesting process, and, you know, one of the things that I try to encourage is that, you know, I want opportunities for the public to see what we do. So, we have on occasion head court in different cities or townships to have the opportunity for us to kind of go to the public, make it easier for people to see us. People are always welcome to come down to our court to see it in action. And of course, you know, I and other judges are always available to kind of go out and talk to public groups, you know, be it scout troops or otherwise, just to kind of, you know, help educate people on what it is that we do. And just, you know, I hate to come without bearing gifts, so I've got some cards with my name on it, so that if anybody ever wants to get in contact with me, you can do that. They also have FCC schedules on the back, so there's something for you to use as well. So, if it's okay, I'll just hand those out. And if you have any questions for me about what we do, I'm happy to respond, but other than that, thank you for the opportunity to come out here and speak tonight.
Actually, we have a great, large group of young people here that may have questions in regards to it, aspiring to be the judge, so.
Yeah, I could certainly talk about that and everything that is necessary to be a lawyer and go to law school, so I'm happy to have those conversations. Obviously, you've got a busy agenda tonight, and we can do that, you know, on the side.
Thank you, sir.
All right, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, I'd like to invite Byron Wilber forward. So, we had a vacancy in the police department, and we follow a civil service process, and recently, we conducted that process and completed it. Byron Wilber was the top candidate that came out of that process. So, today, I'd like to swear him in. He'll be starting soon with the police department, which will bring us back to 22 full-time sworn officers. Please raise your right hand. Repeat after me. Aye, say your name. Aye, Byron Wilber. Solidly swear or refer. Solidly swear or refer. That I will support the Constitution of the United States. That I will support the Constitution of the United States. And the State of Ohio. And the State of Ohio. And that I will enforce the laws and ordinances of the City of Harrison. And that I will enforce the laws and ordinances of the City of Harrison. The State of Ohio. State of Ohio. The United States of America. And the United States of America. And that I will. And that I will. In all respects. In all respects. Observe the provisions of the charter. Observe the provisions of the charter. And the ordinances of. And the ordinances of. The City of Harrison. The City of Harrison. And that I will. And that I will. Faithfully and completely. Faithfully and completely. Discharge the duties. Discharge the duties. Of the office upon which I'm about to. Of the office upon which I'm about to enter. Congratulations. Thank you. She has a presentation.
Hi, Mr. Mayor and members of the council, and all of the many, many people that I didn't know would be here tonight.
You're going to get a lot of publicity.
Awesome. Great.
There's the camera for you. I'm just kidding.
Oh, yeah. No, I'm going to avoid that.
You can't avoid it.
My name is Lisa Daniel, and I work at Church on Fire Ministries. I've been on full-time staff there for 10 years in various roles and have been involved in the church since it was started over 21 years ago because my parents are pastors, so I didn't have a choice. Now, I go there because I like to.
Preacher's kid.
Preacher's kid. The good kind. And one of the things that we see is so important as our role at Church on Fire is being a piece of this community and serving our community. I saw Mr. Tracy here earlier. I don't know if he's still here or not. We do a lot with our schools. Mr. Hamstra has really opened his arms to letting us serve the kids in the school district. I don't know how much you know about what we do for, you know, we do a big back-to-school event. There's lots of things, but we know that there's lots more that we could do, and we wanted to come and just, or I wanted to come on behalf of Church on Fire and just ask you. We don't want to just spin our wheels and do things that are not important. We don't want to waste resources, our time, money. We want to see what you guys say, hey, we have a really big need in this area, whatever that area is, and we wanted to just hear what you have to say so that we can take that into consideration for our planning and move forward with it. And I love Harrison. I graduated from Harrison at a year that I'll keep to myself, so you won't have to scare at what I am, but I have two kids in the district. I love this city, and we love this city as, you know, as members of Church on Fire. So, what can we do to partner with you? Where are there things that, you know, maybe there's struggles or gaps that we can come in and help out with?
Ooh, I love hearing this. I love the word partnership, and I absolutely, yes. I will absolutely. Got a list.
Great, okay.
Thank you.
So, I'm going to brag on Lisa and Church on Fire a little bit if I can. So, some of the things that they do, I think most see the highlighter, not only bringing school supplies to needy families, haircuts, and being able to partner with the community. Because the first day of school is one of those days that you don't forget as a child. It's exciting to be able to go there clean-cut, ready to go. But on top of that, Lisa runs a couple Fill the Truck events every year, where, so if some of you don't know, some of our children in Harrison go home hungry, don't have meals. The only meals they get are at school. And one of the things that they do is they fill backpacks with supplies on Fridays, so on the weekends, they're taking food home so that they have something to eat.
So, we don't do that personally, but we provide the food for the, there's two different organizations, so I don't want to take credit for something we don't do, but twice a year, we raise up 55,000 food items through donations from our church, send them to the appropriate, Whitewater Crossing does one, and two other churches, so that 180 kids each weekend get food. We just, there's stuff that people need, and not all of it is food or money, but, you know, is there areas that need cleaned up? Are there things that need attention that we could step in and help be a part of that?
So, Lisa, the first thing that came to mind when you talked about that is the day of service that we're planning with the school district, the city, there's the Rotary, there's a whole bunch of organizations.
Okay.
And that's going to be September 15th. So, our next meeting, I'm going to have to look at the calendar. I don't have it memorized right now, but if you get me your, I might have your email, actually.
Well, Geraldine Jobe gave me your contact information.
Oh, okay. Well, call me. Sure.
What is Cindy's cell phone number? No, you better not do that.
Oh, no, Mike. It's, everyone knows it. It's fine. Absolutely. Call me, yes.
Can you say it out loud on the TV?
Everyone knows. It's fine. Just make sure.
Is that specifically a day of service to serve the facilities of the school district?
The whole entire, the whole entire, the whole entire Southwest Local School District jurisdiction.
Awesome.
So, yeah. We're looking for projects, and it's going to be a phenomenal ceremony.
Awesome.
Just to let everybody in on a little exciting secrets. Yeah, we're going to have a flyover with the sheriff's helicopter and, yeah.
So, one of the things that we had kind of thought might be a need, and I know you guys just had the city cleanup day where you open up for people to bring their things in. We didn't know if there was a need in any of the neighborhoods for us to go to the neighborhood to bring dumpsters and people to help people that may not be able to do it themselves.
I think that stuff is needed all throughout the year. There are so many people that are homebound, and it does, it ends up falling behind, especially this time of year where grass has taken off, shrubs are growing real fast. And I know through just some of the different stuff that I've been involved in, it is obviously a need. But, you know, there are so many different opportunities that continue to be presented to us, whether it's cleanup around here, whether it's going out in the community, working with homebound individuals, whether it's the, like the Hope Over Heroin Event.
Yeah.
You know, we had a young man that came here for that, and I know you guys have a, are associated with the magnificent facility up on top of the hill up there. And it's a list of stuff that continues to come to us. So, I think a partnership would be absolutely fabulous. We probably could go on until 11 o'clock, 12 o'clock tonight if we sat here and listed it all out, so.
So, one more thing, we have the Keep Harrison Beautiful program. That's a big thing that we started last year. So, downtown is just in a continual, there's a group of men and women that just clean up, you know, just clean up mostly city sidewalks and within reach. They don't go into people's property. Right. But, I mean, that's ongoing, and I, my goal was to make it spread citywide, you know, in all the neighborhoods and have like a captain in each neighborhood and that. So, we can talk about that, you know.
Wonderful.
Yeah.
Well, we just want to let you guys know that we are here for the City of Harrison, and if you, you know, we've had people at the schools give us a call periodically and say, hey, we've got a student specifically in this kind of a need. We can't do everything for everybody, but we can do something for lots of people. So, if there's ever something that comes across your desk and you say, what can we do, please call us.
Okay.
I know Urbano is trying to get in touch with me. Yeah, go ahead.
I'll offer one more thing, Lisa. So, we have different committee meetings, different boards. They're open to the public.
Okay.
So, I mean, we can give you a list. You have recs, you have the rec commission, you have building and lands, you have streets, you have all these different committees. They're open, so if there's any interest with Church on Fire to have anybody attend some of those, you don't have to be at all of them, but attend them to understand the pulse of the city and say, where are there some needs that maybe we don't have to wait four to six months to organize something? That's something that we could do, you know, we could organize collectively and maybe on a smaller scale as well.
Awesome. Great. Well, thank you guys so much. I'll be in touch with you. Thank you, Urbano.
Sounds good.
And thank you, Mr. Mayor and the council for letting me be here tonight.
I'm going to add one real quick thing. I do want to applaud your efforts on Celebrate Recovery and your leadership in the community on that with Roseanne, with more what she's doing there. And I know St. John the Baptist Church wants to start a Celebrate Recovery group, and Life Spring has one. And, you know, I know her vision is if she could have an open Celebrate Recovery meeting every night of the week, right? You know, yeah, so that's certainly something that's been in my prayers. And, you know, so I put that out there because that's something that we can all get involved in, no matter what church we're in, so.
And I think she's training three new organizations that are going to have some, so I think that's awesome. Yeah, I appreciate that. Well, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have one more group under the invited guests and visitors I'd like to announce. We have a group of scouts here from Troop 444. They're joining us tonight so that they can earn one of their badges, and they've been very quiet and cooperative and well-behaved, which I'm sure their parents are very happy about. They're just here to observe so that they can see how city government works, and tonight's been a pretty good example so far. So, I'd like to move on to the business portion of the meeting. The first item is to request or do not request a hearing by the Ohio Division of Liquor Control concerning a new liquor license for Heist and Company LLC at 108 Harrison Avenue. Does anybody have a desire to request a hearing?
No, sir. No, Mayor, no.
So, no action on this item. We have a second request, do not request a hearing. I didn't think this was going to be on here. By the Ohio Division of Liquor Control on a new liquor license for Kimmy's Country Crafts and Candle Boutique LLC, 231 Harrison Avenue. Shannon, is he on?
Your Honor, I would request a hearing.
Okay.
Yep. A second.
So, we have a request and a second for a hearing on this. So, we will send a notice to the Ohio Division of Liquor Control that we are requesting a hearing, and the hearing will be scheduled, and we'll have that at that time. Next item of business is approval resolution to declare moratorium on the granting of building permits or certificates of occupancy for any building, structure, use, or change of use that would enable the cultivation, processing, or retail sale of medical marijuana.
So moved.
This is a renewal of our existing moratorium. So, we have a motion and a second. Is there any questions on this?
The only comment I would make is I want to thank Bill Dietrich and Hank for answering my questions that I had on the issue.
The state has not fully put out all their regulations, so we don't want to begin permitting until those are set in stone. And at that point, then, we'll determine what our rules and regulations locally will be. So, could we please have a roll call on this item?
Grubbs.
Yay.
Lewis.
Yay.
Dole.
Yay.
Maynes.
Yay.
Galindo.
Yay.
Abrams.
Yay.
Menager.
Yay.
And that is Resolution 5, I think.
Next item is approval of resolution for the adoption of the update to the comprehensive plan. So, the last one was Resolution 6.
Resolution 6.
We'll get a motion and a second, and then I'm going to invite Emily forward for presentation.
Motion, no approve. Second.
So, we have a motion and second. We have a very brief presentation by our consultant that helped develop this plan, led us through the process, our community. And I'd like to invite Emily Crowe with McBride Dale Clarion. It's a mouthful. To give a presentation of, brief presentation, overview of the comprehensive plan.
Well, I think it's kind of fortuitous that all of you are here tonight because we're talking about the future of Harrison with this plan, and all of you are part of that future. So, it's really exciting. We spent about two years working, a lot of the people up here around the dais and a lot of people in the audience also participated in the. a lot of the people up here around the dais and a lot of people in the audience also participated in this. And we came up with what I believe is a very short and concise, action-oriented plan for the city to think about the things that you really want to try to achieve as you realize your boundless opportunities and potential here. So since the last presentation of this to council, we made a few minor modifications to improve the quality of the final product. Everything is available online at DivisionHarrison.org. And this will be the planned document that helps council and the planning commission as they're considering development, proposals, or other actions that the city will take related to community facilities, community activities, recreation, all the kinds of things that you have to deal with at the local government level. We've tried to address a strategy here. And we hope that this is a very user-friendly document that the community embraces wholly and regularly updates as you achieve the things that you've set out to do. So it's been a real honor to work with you all. And I look forward to seeing what gets checked off this list in the next six months to a year.
Yes. It's a challenge.
Emily, I want to say thank you to you and your firm for the outstanding work you did on this. The patience that you showed, you know, with some of us as we wrestled with some of these problems. And this is an absolutely wonderful product. We're very proud of the work that's been done on this and everybody in the community. Some of them are here, some of them are not. But there were a lot of citizens, a lot of business owners, a lot of landowners, people sitting up here, a former councilman or a former clerk. Just an awful lot of people put their heart and soul into this. We had input from the county engineer, OKI, and a number of regional people. Judge Amy Seersey was here on behalf of Crosby Township. We had Harrison Township input with Rick Dole and the trustees. I can't say enough about the input we gathered. This is not city council's plan. It's not the mayor's plan. It's not McBride Dale's plan. It's your plan. And you know, I was commenting earlier tonight that, you know, at my age, I'm going to a lot of reunions. And one of the topics that comes up is we are frequently talking with each other about how grateful we are to have grown up at the time and place that we did in the late 50s and early 60s. And what I hope this plan does is it gets implemented. And I think that's the wish of every single person sitting up here, is that 50 years from now, you guys from the basketball team are sitting out there thinking back on this time, telling each other that this was a great time to live and grow up in this area. And that's what this is all about. We want to make this community as good as we can make it. We want this to be a great place to live, work, and play. And I thank everybody for the role they played in getting this done. Thanks again, Emily.
Hey, Mayor. Mr. Manager called me today. Apparently you guys did make one small change. And I don't think that amended resolution got here today, did it?
I'm sorry?
Did Marv send a second resolution today? Because I think in the whereas section, it talks about you guys are voting on the version without any changes, but I think you did make a change since the public hearing.
Okay, so.
So just need to cite that and I'll prepare another one and that'll be the one that'll be signed. But there is a.
Yeah, for the record, for the record, Section 1 will state, instead of the language that's contained in Section 1, that language will be changed to read, "The proposed City of Harrison Comprehensive Land Use Plan Update," capital U, "is attached heretofu, is hereby approved by council." We're deleting the language relating to the public hearing of May 1st, 2018.
So I'll go ahead and prepare one, Mayor, and send it to you, not the one you signed. I don't want there to be any misunderstanding of what you're voting on.
So the resolution we're adopting is with the revised language.
Right. What we were shown tonight, not what was present at the public hearing.
Correct, correct.
There were some.
This is the attachment.
Most of them were clerical or editorial errors, but yeah. Is everybody good with that?
Yeah, just for clarity, we went back after the public hearing and picked up some typos, grammatical changes, punctuation, a couple of small nits that we had, you know, with the way the wording was framed. And those things were modified. And all that's in the document that's sitting in front of you tonight.
Please take the roll.
Lewis.
Yay.
Dole.
Yay.
Maynes.
Yay.
Galindo.
Yay.
Abrams.
Yay.
Manager.
Yay.
Grubbs.
Yay.
Next item is to prove.
It's one of the resolutions, seven.
Seven, right. Next item is to approve ordinance for adoption of proposed changes to the fire code, fire department code.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or discussion on this item? Came through committee, so. Could you please take the roll?
Dole.
Yay.
Maynes.
Yay.
Galindo.
Yay.
Abrams.
Yay.
Manager.
Yay.
Grubbs.
Yay.
Lewis.
Yay.
So that completes the business portion of the meeting. I have one visitor who signed up to speak this evening. Debbie and Ron Davis, they'd like to speak to us about street safety, potholes, drain of water and sewer, and fire pit rules for front yards. They'd like to come up to the podium.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You're welcome.
We lived at 332 Marine Courts behind Community Center for 35 years. And an incident about a week or so ago, or April 20th, we had a young child, about four or five years old, run out between two cars. My wife almost hit her. We live on the street. We know there's children. And we drive very slowly. The problem we have is some of the parents that don't want to be adults don't watch their children. We know we can't legislate common sense. I love all the kids in our street. I don't want them to get hurt. But I can't, I'm retired now, but I can't watch them. I tell them constantly, look both ways. I realize as you get older, maybe 10, 11, 12, you start learning that if you have a good set of parents that tell you that. Let me regroup here. I have talked to the parents and politely said, even though this is a dead-end street, people that don't live on the street will drive very fast up here. And it could very soon, we had a child hit by a car 25 years ago. Luckily, he wasn't hurt bad. Came out between two cars. And I know that happens a lot of places. I personally hit a child back in the 70s. Almost killed the child. It wasn't my fault, but I was down for quite a few years. I went to the hospital and checked. No, he survived. He ran his bike into my vehicle as I was on Mitchell Avenue, which is a bad place, wetting place. We just want to see the, I don't know, more of a police presence. And if we have the adults that we try to talk to, right now we're the villains because we called the police. And they think, certain families on our street think we're bad for doing that, but I don't care. We do have good families in our street that do watch their children very well. Sometimes they make the kids go around. I just tell them if they live on a cul-de-sac dead end, that doesn't guarantee it's a playground. It does not. Well, I got just one thing to say. I think Harrison Police Department is very professional. We have Officer Coyle, Officer Jaeger, Lieutenant Lowry, I think, are some of the best officers I've ever known. Well, the night the officer came down, and I don't know him from Adam, but we asked, we told him what happened, and he said, "What's a dead-end street?" And I just said, "That's, no, no." Right? You know, I respect law enforcement officers. He said if we hit a child during the speed limit, it wouldn't be our fault, no liability. I said, "That's, no." I kept my mouth shut. Then we asked for a card, and he said he didn't have one. And he may not have, but I don't think we were treated with very much respect. And I'm not used to that because, like I say, Harrison's very professional. My bottom line is I'm done. I just want the kids to be safe. I know council can't legislate common sense. I know that. We're going to be the bad guys on the street because we're going to call if we see kids out at night running up and down the street. We're not against kids that know what they're doing, looking both ways, and I tell them constantly. That's basically what I have to say. I don't know what can be done about it. Some neighbors are talking about speed bumps.
No.
I don't think that would solve it. There is a sign that says a deaf child lives on our street. I told my children and my grandchildren, when you come to a four-way stop, do not trust any cars. You wait, wait till, you know, it's all stuff you got to, we don't want to lose any children. And that's what I have to say.
I thank you for bringing your concerns forward. I've talked to Ron and Debbie twice now recently about this incident and assured them that our police department would address any situations they felt needed to be addressed internally properly and would have a greater presence in the area and would interact with residents as they felt would be necessary. But people don't change behaviors overnight. It's a thing that takes time. And I told them if they wanted to come, they're welcome to come and address council. We will work towards that goal. And like you said, you can't legislate common sense. I also can't change behavior. But I can encourage a change in behavior, and so can the police. And so sometimes those changes take time. People get into routines. They do things. They've done it for years. And then all of a sudden, they need to change some things. But it's one of those where we approach it from a common sense level. Can't legislate that, but we can apply it. And that's what I've committed to them is going to happen. And I think that their concern was that the rest of council understand what's going on and that this isn't, probably isn't unique to their street. It's probably happening in other places also. That's part of their concern.
I was just going to say, thank you for coming. As a parent myself, I have two boys and they're currently almost 13 and 15. And we live in a neighborhood, you know, we don't have the acreage that, you know, some other people do out in the township and whatnot. So my kids have always, when they got old enough, you know, I was always out there with them, of course. But when they get old enough, like now, I mean, they're playing basketball and they're in the street. It is what it is. Now, I will say that the rule is when a car comes, you have to get out of the street. Now, I will tell you, sometimes they're running wild, this is two summers ago, and they're playing tag, and they get excited and they cross the street and they don't look. I mean, it happens. And it would be horrific, I agree, for them to get hit by a car. And it would be devastating for the person driving the car to hit a child. But what I will say, I think it's a team effort on all of our parts. And the police aren't always the answer, honestly. I think it's parents educating their kids because they're their very first teachers and everyone working together to, the kids are going to run outside. They just are. I'd rather have them outside, mine, running instead of playing video games. That's just my opinion.
If they're having a fire case, they're all drunk after dark, and we're talking about two-year-olds. We have to, I mean, this is, I mean, this is a suggestion. If you want to do this, everybody can park their car in Community Center. We can start walking to our houses. I don't think that's fair to our neighborhood. But in order to please these two families so they can have their party, which is almost like a block party, which I think you have to have permit for. I mean, we're not able to walk up and down, or drive up to our home after dark on Friday and Saturday night. They're having a party in their front yard, and the kids are running wild.
Well, they can obstruct traffic. And I'm not going to go, you know, obviously, I'm not a police officer now. So again, call them if you think that the law is being broken. But ultimately, everyone has to work together. These kids are going to play outside. I mean, again, I'd rather have them outside. And parents do need to supervise, absolutely.
I mean, this is after dark.
Right.
This is after dark.
Ma'am, we don't want to be uncomfortable or awkward with our neighbors. We want to live.
Right. That's what I mean.
We moved to one place in Price Hill to Harrison to raise our family.
Right.
It's been great.
Right. It is great.
But yeah, we realize there's not a whole lot can be done with, but we wanted to make you aware of what.
This is the first time you've been here about this issue.
I just, I love children. I don't want any of them to get hurt. And I'll do my best to be out there. They can get mad at me, but I don't care. I mean, I'm not going to break the law. I just, I don't want the kids hurt.
Well, I think that's, you know, for the past four years, this time of year, the announcements start coming out, watch out, because driving up and down the streets in town, there are two-parent families that are, both parents are working and kids are running around. We all have to be vigilant about what we do while we're out and about. But I'll be the first to admit, I'm right there with you. It's a parent's responsibility to step up and, you know, obviously, our police are patrolling the streets and they are there.
It's not the place at all.
Yeah. No, no, it's not. It's not. And that's where we obviously have to draw a line. We can't be parenting kids. But we can be present. And I think that's an important part of what we do anyway, you know? Because our police force is top-notch. Our police force is absolutely excellent at what they do. And that's community building also.
And we have two heroin addicts that live on the street that occasionally drop, help them down the street. So I mean, it's a big issue.
We know there's no easy solution. But we just wanted you all to be aware.
I appreciate you all coming.
Well, we're going to, Ethan will be announcing pretty soon that we're going to have one of the evaluations where you can come in and talk about your streets. And we use that information to determine, as one of the many factors, which streets we put on the schedule to be attended to next.
Yeah.
There's multiple different factors that go into that condition of the street. What the use of the street is, is it a thoroughfare? Is it a dead end? Is it residential, business district? How well we can get it funded with grant money? It's a lot easier to spend other people's money than ours. So when the state wants to give you money to do that street, and it's going to cost you a pittance to do it, or we can do this street and it's going to cost 100% our money, we usually spend a little bit over there and try to do two of those projects.
Mayor, we do appreciate Harrison. It's a safe area. It's good. We don't have the problem to have in larger cities, and I hope it stays that way.
We work hard at that.
I have grandchildren, and I just love them to death. I want them to be out here enjoying their life and appreciate you letting, letting us speak.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have any visitors that would like to speak that did not sign up this evening? Okay. We'll move on to the reports. I have a proclamation for my report this evening. So earlier, we had Cassie Elliott provide a beautiful invocation for the meeting. And I think that prayer is an important part of everyone's life. So I have a proclamation establishing May 3rd, 2018, as National Day of Prayer, prayers across Harrison, Ohio, and Southwest Local School District Day. Whereas each year, on the National Day of Prayer, we come together as one community under one God to give thanks for the many blessings God has given us, our families, our community, and our nation. And whereas, we also come together to ask for His continued wisdom, strength, and protection for things yet to come. And whereas, not only has God given us the choice and freedom to pray, worship, and to believe, our Constitution guarantees our religious liberty to practice one's faith publicly. And whereas, in 1988, the Congress, by Public Law 100-307, called on the President to issue each year a proclamation designating the first Thursday of May as National Day of Prayer. And whereas, on this National Day of Prayer, we can pray especially for many people around the world who are persecuted for their beliefs and deprived of their fundamental liberty to live according to their beliefs and conscience. And whereas, we pray for triumph over oppression and for God's love and mercy over evil and hatred. Now therefore, I William Nyer, Mayor of the City of Harrison, Ohio, do hereby reclaim May 3rd, 2018, as National Day of Prayer, prayers across Harrison, Ohio, and Southwest Local School District Day. I have invited the community of Harrison and Southwest Local School District to pray for our community, state, and national leaders, our families, schools, and businesses in accordance with their own faith and consciences, to pray in thanksgiving for the freedoms and blessings we have received and for God's guidance and continued protection.
I don't have the details with me, but there is gonna be an event coming up where people will be lining some of the streets in the city, not blocking any intersections, and I don't know the exact time of day. Do, does somebody know that? Can you tell me and I'll announce it?
Seven, uh, it'll be seven, 7:13 PM, Thursday. The churches are asked to ring their bells for one solid minute, and then at 7:14, there's, we pray.
This Thursday?
This Thursday.
So this Thursday at 7:13 PM, the churches are being asked to ring their bells for one minute, complete minute, and people will be lining, I believe it's Harrison Avenue, not blocking the intersection or obstruct, obstructing traffic, and observation of the National Day of Prayer. So if you'd like to join in that, you're feel welcome to. It'd be awesome to see it stretch from the state line all the way out Harrison Avenue. It'd be great. So I'd like to thank whoever, I forget who sent me this, it was Rita Skeen for sending me the proclamation, Rita, and you can have a copy of this later. But I think that prayer's an important part of everyone's life, and it doesn't matter what faith you are, but I, I would encourage you to pursue it. That concludes my report, and I'll move on to the Law Director's report.
Mayor, members of council, I do need to request an executive session tonight for at least one reason I know for sure, which is to discuss collective bargaining. I think we also have acquisition, a potential property acquisition, and maybe also a potential pending litigation matter, so.
All three.
We could request, someone can make a motion for all three of those reasons, that would be great.
So moved.
Second.
That's all I have, Mayor, thanks.
Okay, we have a motion and second for an executive session for the items mentioned by the Law Director. Please take the roll.
Maynes.
Yay.
Galindo.
Yay.
Abrams.
Yay.
Manager.
Yay.
Grubbs.
Yay.
Lewis.
Yay.
Dole.
Yay.
The conclusion of the reports will go into executive session.
Mayor, before we go there, Mary Kayser's in the back of the room, did, did she have something she wanted to present?
It was just something we were gonna talk about.
I'm sorry, I didn't sign up to be a visitor, 'cause I gave everybody information.
Okay.
And my understanding, before the meeting, I wanted to let you know some differences and changes for your opinion, that Mr. Calano, Calano was going to bring it up in his.
Okay. All right, I just didn't want you to think we were ignoring you. Okay.
Right, okay. So we'll start with Ms. Abrams this evening and her report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do have a report tonight. They always laugh 'cause I have a lot to report, but these reports, I'm proud to share with you, 'cause it shows what I've been doing since the last meeting, so bear with me. Got a lot of thank-yous tonight, right? First up, thank you, girls, for coming here tonight, super impressive. I was never good at basketball, but, you know, it is what it is. So congratulations, and I'm sure high school will be a force to be reckoned with, right? The other schools are gonna be afraid, which is exciting. All right, and of course, thank you Reverend Elliott for coming and giving the invocation tonight, it's always great to see you. Welcome to Officer Wilbur, we're excited to have him serve here in Harrison. And thank you to Lisa Daniels with Church on Fire, we're excited to partner with them, of course, in all of our many projects. And thank you to Judge Miller for coming out tonight and sharing what the Court of Appeals is all about, and look for Judge Miller's name on the ballot this year. Economic Development Committee met tonight, and I have some things to report here. Construction is underway on the Unilock project on Southwest Parkway and the Jed. The 100,000 square foot manufacturer of home pavers is expected to be completed by the end of the year and employ approximately 30 associates in its first year. The 56,000 square foot expansion at Stopstick on Industrial Drive is now underway. It will also be completed by the end of the year. The company does not plan to add employees right away, but could add up to five in 2019. The city had released a request for letters of interest for the property at 301 Harrison Avenue. Four individuals took the information packet, but only one response was received so far. An over-the-rhine business owner has expressed interest in putting a restaurant with a bar in the building. More to come. The Economic Development Department has engaged McBride Dale Clarion to complete the downtown design standards work, and work has already begun on a draft that will be shared with Planning Commission and Council before submitted for formal consideration. The item should be presented well in advance of the 120-day moratorium expiration. The city has executed a maintenance agreement from ODOT to allow us to begin bids to paint the fence over the 70, I-74 New Haven Bridge. We are still waiting for the signed copy from ODOT. The Community Improvement Corporation will conduct its annual organizational meeting this week on Thursday and name its officers. As you may recall, council created the CIC to undertake economic development projects on behalf of the community. However, no projects have been yet defined for the CIC in which to participate. Want to announce Market Street Grill won, I think it was two awards, at the Taste of Cincinnati. So we're very excited to have them here in town, of course. Our next meeting for Economic Development is June 5th at 6:00 PM. Couple other things, the Fire Department did some pretty cool training, I was able to observe. A couple of weeks ago, they had the Fire Blast trailer from the Ohio Fire Academy, so it gives them real-life experience putting out fires, they simulate a kitchen fire and a couch on fire, like a basement fire, so they got to go in and aggressively fight that. Hands-on training is always the best. We have Alert HC, it's a new program that Hamilton County Communications Center is rolling out. We're gonna go ahead and have two presentations here at the community center, one on Tuesday, May 22nd, at 6:30 PM. It's gonna only be an hour, so we're respectful with everybody's time. But what HC, or, yeah, Alert HC and Smart 911 is, it's basically a program where you sign up for, it's free, and you set up your profile, and you get alerts to your phone or email or a phone call to your house, whatever you want. So let's say if there's tornado watch, or let's say there's a winter storm warning, or let's say there's a shelter in place, or maybe an active threat, they will text you that, so you're aware of what's going on. And then Smart 911, you create a confidential profile, and you could enter in anything about you and your family members that the first responders need to know. So, the beautiful part about it is, it's completely locked up and confidential until you call 911 from the numbers listed. And then the first responders have access to that information for 45 minutes. So let's say, you know, you could put in there how many pets you have, where, you know, which room you sleep in, medications you're on, any type, anything that would be helpful to first responders. This is a great tool. So again, Hamilton County Communications Center will be here, and they're gonna give a little presentation and show people how to sign up, May 22nd at 6:30 PM, one hour, and then again on Friday, May 25th at 10:30 AM. So there's two sessions, so if you're around during the day, and we'll post this on our website and on our Facebook page. Our food truck rally in the district is May 19th from 4:00 to 10:00 PM. Obviously, the plans are, they're already set, but we have, I wanna say, I think 13 food trucks, we might be up to 14 now, and live music, of course, all day. And, you know, just fun, shopping, local shopping. So again, May 19th, 4:00 to 10:00, come down for that. Harrison Recreation Commission Summer Concert Series kicks off June 12th with the menus, and our next REC meeting is May 9th at 7:00 PM. I came across this, this stat, and Mike, if you saw this, I don't really wanna hijack the Tree Board thing, but this was exciting, so I wanna report on it. Did you see this? Ohioans planted roughly 27,000 trees last year, leading the country for the 37th consecutive year for the state with the most tree-city USA communities. According to the Ohio Department of Natural Resources, 241 cities, villages, and townships participated in the program, and we are a tree-city. So I wanna say a sincere thank you to our Tree Board and everybody that serves, of course, which is very exciting. Did I totally hijack, I'm sorry? It was exciting.
Thank you.
Anyway, so I wanna thank you for serving, of course, and dedicating your time to the Tree Board, and he's got the hat. See, I don't have the hat, I'm not on the committee, but it's fine. Anyway, and then of course, the answers, I wanna say, I wanna say again, the answers that people asked when Duke was here, the engineers with Duke and the power outages, just to report on the power outage today that happened around, I don't know, whatever, 4:30?
4:30.
Not sure. I mean, our power was out, but anyway, one of the workers on West Road, I guess, dug a little too deep and hit something, and then it blew something. So anyway, the power was out, but it's all restored now, according to Chief Lindsay. And Duke's answers to the questions that people asked are on our website, they're on our Facebook page, and if you need the full PDF, I'm happy to email it to you, so. And we are in constant partnership with Duke, trying to tackle and upgrade this power outage issue. But today couldn't be helped, it was human error, so. I think that's all I have, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Great, thank you. Mr. Manager, do you have a report this evening?
I do, Mayor, thank you. First of all, I wanna extend my congratulations and thank you to the Township Trustees for the job they did last weekend on the city township cleanup effort. You know, I've lived out here a long time, and that's the first time I've attended that event. I used to tell my wife, I don't need to go there, I don't have any trash. And then as I dragged up, like 30 years' worth of tax returns and paperwork that I couldn't believe that I still had, I think we pretty well filled up the shredding thing up there.
That was you.
Two full carloads.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, like, you know, Tom Lozycamp said, you know, like, hey dude, why don't you do this every year instead of every 20 years? But it was an absolute amazing thing to watch. Biggest dumpsters I've ever seen in my life, and those dumpsters had everything in them, from couches to you name it. They were collecting old TVs, all this stuff that you see when you go by the Salvation Army truck or the Goodwill truck and you see somebody's couch that's been sitting there soaking wet for three days. Instead of doing that, people, we have this wonderful event, and it happens twice a year. They do it in the spring, they do it in the fall, and if you haven't seen the operation, it's impressive. But what really impressed me was the hands-on of the township leaders. I saw both Rick Dole and Tom Lozycamp there, I understand Bill Knows was up there as well, and these aren't guys that just get elected to sit up at a desk and do nothing, these guys are out there getting dirty. And it was really cool to see that effort and to see the leaders leading and stepping on the grenade first. Excuse the military comment there, but I was proud of them, and I just wanted to recognize that tonight. Our Law Committee met earlier this evening, we talked about the comprehensive plan and how delighted we are to have that completed. We talked about pending litigation and items that could become pending litigation in executive session, and we also talked about some of the legislation that was adopted this evening. I had the privilege of attending the quarterly meeting of the Inter-Community Cable Regulatory Commission last week. Their longtime director, Brad Stapleton, stepped down after 30 years, he's retiring. They got their new high-def equipment starting to arrive, and they're installing it. Couple weeks ago, I attended the monthly meeting of Ohio, Kentucky, Indiana Regional Council of Governments. I've distributed to my colleagues here a detailed report of what went on at that meeting. They can peruse that at their leisure. We've got, one thing I would like to have, I guess, Grounds report on tonight, is the status of Willow Park. I've had a lot of people asking questions about that, and I don't know where we are with that, but if, you know, in some brief form, give us some thoughts on where that's heading. Springtime's coming, and people are wanting to know what they can expect in terms of usage of the park. And again, I wanna thank the basketball team for being here tonight, proud of you guys, student athletes, student athletes, student athletes. Remember that all the way through school, you're students first, athletes second, keep the grades up. Congratulations again, and thanks to Judge Miller for coming out, and, you know, for everybody else that addressed this, I won't spend 10 more minutes duplicating what Cindy's already done. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Mr. Grubbs, do you have a report this evening?
Yeah, I have a couple items, I'm gonna try to make it real quick. Obviously, thank you for everyone coming out, and congratulations, girls, judge, thank you, folks, you know, hearing from y'all is incredibly important. So, you know, I, I was gonna make the comment anyway, because I have kids running up and down, out in the street on my way home. Everybody, please watch what you're doing as you're driving the streets. It's warm out, they stay out longer into the evening, pools open, so watch your kids around pools. We don't want any news media out here for bad accidents that take place. And it's from now until September, when all these things start popping on the news, let's not be a part of that. Really watch what you're doing as you're out and about. The only other thing that I wanted to throw out there, we have finance on May 15th at 5:30, and we should have full first quarter numbers completed by then. Other than that, that is all I have, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Lewis, do you have a report this evening?
I do not have any committee reports this evening, Mayor. I want, I'll keep this short, 'cause I'm so excited to get to an executive session. 'Cause it is only 20 till 9:00. Anyway, I'd just like to thank all those who came out this evening, and congratulations to the girls' basketball team who's no longer here, you got two of them, two holdouts, yes.
One's mine, she's standing strong.
She has to stay 'cause of her dad, so.
She needs a ride.
And Chrissy, of course. And anyway, and congratulations and welcome to our new police officer, Officer Wilbur. And that's all I have for this evening, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Dole, do you have a report this evening?
I sure do, Mr. Mayor. We're kinda all over the place this evening, but I'll start off with the Streets Committee, our construction update, our big construction, you know, road reconstruction project, I guess you would say, this summer is Flintstone Drive. Jim Leslie, our Utilities Director, let us know that it's progressing well, curbs are underway, demolition is underway. And we're also going to get with our associates to see if there's any opportunities to use some of our bid savings, to take care of some other kinda, you know, last-leg projects down in that area. Just kind of a heads-up to everybody, I know you talked about the potholes down on Marie Court, I've got them at my house, too. But this time of year, our Streets Department, those guys, just to kinda give you an idea of what those guys are doing right now, same thing we're doing at our house and in our driveways and our yards, they're running around like crazy, the weather's just broke, so they're working their way through the city, patching the potholes where they can and patching curbs and sidewalks, cleaning up the city buildings, mowing all the grass, so they'll make it around to you, I'm sure they'll make it around to me, but, well, I'll say something, we'll see if we can't get that moved up a little bit. So, you know, they kind of address the, the major, you know, maintenance and rehabilitation stuff of the roads in order of, you know, the number of cars that go across them. Harrison Avenue's gonna get more attention than a Park Avenue or something like that, you know? Just because of the sheer volume of traffic. We will have this summer, normally midsummer, we'll have a Streets meeting where everybody can kinda come and air their concerns and grievances, and we'll use that then to get our list together for the grant writing in late summer and the fall. And that's where we get our money for our road construction projects that we do every year. Moving on through Streets here, looking down at our wastewater committee, Utilities and Wastewater Committee, we went ahead and we passed an emergency fix on the West Road sewer, authorized them to go ahead and replace what needed to be replaced. So that's underway, ongoing, they've went ahead and they've camered everything from Harrison Avenue down, so we've got a pretty good picture of what's going on with that sewer all the way down West Road there, so, you know, we can make educated decisions on how we wanna go about, and what's the, you know, the best timeline, and how are we gonna pay for it? So, and that's all some information that's gonna be coming over the next month here, we'll get that to everybody, so. Another blurb about Planning Commission, so the next Planning Commission meeting will be May 8th at 7:30 PM. And then there was some talk tonight about Willow Park, I know that's Building and Lands, but we talked about it a little bit in the Streets Committee. I don't know how many folks have heard or have been interested about it, I know there's been some interest. And when it will be open, the last flood really put, put the hurt on it, so. Tonight, we discussed, the Street Department is gonna go down, and they're gonna have to reroute some of the trails, reset the benches, get everything cleaned up, and where it's safe for folks to get into it, we're anticipating getting Willow Park open by late May. So that, that's where we're at right now, and if we get it moved up and we get it done earlier, we'll definitely let you know, so.
Mr. Dole, is there a permanent remedy that's available? I know one of the comments I saw somewhere is they were suggesting riprapping the shoreline.
That'd definitely help.
But I mean, we're talking about expense, Corps of Engineers involvement.
Corps of Engineers, right, that's the big thing.
And where's our budget on that in terms of the work we already did on the park? Is there money left in that fund, or has that been depleted?
Not much. Not much.
Okay.
The money that's left in that has already been encumbered with purchase orders. So, on the riprap, just a comment, when the gas pumping station was installed out in Crosby Township, they did a very nice project, the gas company did, over in the park along the walking trail, and they probably spent several hundred thousand dollars on the bank of that creek. And their hundred thousand dollars is no longer there. It's been washed away, and it was very large concrete slabs.
Soldier piles.
It's, it's down, way downstream now. I don't know that shoring that up on the creek was, is gonna be any different than what we saw happen on the Whitewater. That was a flood we haven't seen the likes of since the nineties here. I mean, it was pretty traumatic. The water was moving very quickly. We were probably our own worst enemy in that we took the barriers out when we cleared out the meadow. That allowed the water to move through that area faster, and that's where the most bank erosion occurred. So, we put a park on a river. There's consequences that come with it. We just have to accept those. It's a beautiful park, and it will, you know, we'll do what we can to maintain that park there, but we're gonna have these setbacks every once in a while when the river decides that Mother Nature tells us to come into the park and eat a little bit of it away. So, we'll do what we can. And that's all I've got. I did wanna say, did, with the flood that we had down here, Fawn Drive was dry, was it not?
Oh, yeah. Fawn Drive was dry. So, those improvements that, yeah, we need to go there again, but yeah.
Campbell Road didn't fare too bad.
It was close.
It was very close. But what I'm saying is, that was, it was a, it was unique. Obviously, we haven't seen that kinda water since ninety-seven. So, my question is, or my statement is, there's gotta be an answer, and whether we talk to the, you know, Army Corps of Engineers, obviously, that's way above my, on my wheelhouse.
There's an answer, but I don't think that you have the money, or we have the money for that.
I understand, but we're not just gonna let the park just go.
Sure. It's gonna be a yearly maintenance item, is what it's gonna be. And we talked about, I told Ray Aker last year, I said, "It's gonna wash away every year. We're just gonna have to go in there."
Well, it might not be every year. It might not be every year.
This was a fifty-year event, right? This, maybe it was a hundred-year event.
Well, listen, I've, I've lived through, I've lived here eighteen years, and I've, you don't even wanna know how many hundred-year rains I've lived through. Thousands, okay? So, anyway.
I appreciated the discussion, because people have been asking about it.
They have been, right.
I think it was fair of us to be able to give the community a little bit of feedback as to what we're looking at, what we're thinking about.
Right.
And frankly, what the budget constraints are.
I agree.
Right.
We'll, we'll put, I won't say we'll, I hope that council will put a line item in for maintenance of that park, knowing that every year it may not be needed, but every so many years, we expect that we're gonna need a substantial amount of restoration in that park. Otherwise, we're gonna be behind the eight ball like we are right now, because we won't have the funds.
And I think all of our parks, actually, all of city property, really, to really kinda umbrella all of it, needs to...
Well, I mean, it gets regular maintenance.
Well, it does. I'm saying, but, I mean, this is new.
Sure, and it's a great asset.
And people like it, and they visit it, and it's, right. So, we might as well...
It is on the list.
It's on the list. Good. I like it.
Along with the potholes and the grass moving and everything else.
Hey, there's no doubt they're busy. I, yeah, 'cause I drive around. It seems like running my kids everywhere. Yeah, they're, they're busy. I understand. So.
Thank you, Mr. Dole. Mr. Menjer, do you have a report this evening?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Yes.
It's not all been stolen yet.
What's that?
It's not all been stolen or reported yet.
Some has been stolen a bit, but that, that's okay. Cindy took care of the visitors, so I won't repeat that. And thank you for all the visitors. It's great having visitors here. That's part of what makes this job fun, is to have a roomful of people, people excited about their city. On the township cleanup, the weather was perfect, right? We had great weather, so we had great turnout. I dropped off my TV, and I dropped off a bunch of metal and my invasive calorie pear that I cut down last fall. I got the last of those branches out the door, and it was, it was hopping. So, I wanna thank all our city workers, our township workers. There were county workers there, you know, that were helping people unload all of their stuff, their twenty years of documents. So, we were...
Twenty?
That was, it was exciting to see the, you know, the TV truck leave and have to come back and get another truck, right? You know, people were getting rid of their stuff, which is, that's a good thing. We live in an age where we got too much stuff. I'll put on my Tree City USA cap here, tree board cap, and I, you know, I didn't have that information, Cindy, so thanks for sharing that. But we did on, oh, gosh, a week ago Friday, so that was April twentieth, the mayor and myself and several representatives of the tree board went to Miami'sburg, and we got our recognition as being a Tree City for the third year. So, that's exciting. I got a hat, so I can put on my tree board hat and ready to go. I like hats. And then, on April twenty-third, we gave away two hundred swamp white oak trees. We didn't have two hundred people there that night, but we had a good turnout. And I went to the library tonight, and there were two trees left there. So, we gave away all of our, our trees. So, that's exciting. IT committee met tonight. We had two proposals for an IT audit, and we're looking at Hamilton-Claremont Cooperative. They work with the school district. They're getting a lot here at the Southwest Local School District for doing IT audits, and, and so we're gonna move forward and continue to try to get an understanding of what we have as far as IT assets here in the city. Real quick, last year, I ran a bit on this hashtag fit to be on council, so this will be my ninth year running, or participating, rather, in the Flying Pig Marathon. This year, I hope to run it again for the third straight year. I'm not gonna run it as fast as I did last year, but I am gonna post up on my Facebook page a little bit about Lauren's Fight for Cure. Lauren Hill, as we all know, you know, died of DIPG, brain cancer, three years ago, and her dad and I went to high school together. So, I'm gonna post that up. If you wanna donate some money to, to that cause, to see a cure for cancer, that'll be up there. And that's all I have.
Could you give us an update on the volunteer work at the motocross park?
Oh, yeah. We're busy with that, too. I was gonna, didn't think most people would be interested in that. But we were out there last weekend. We were putting in, finishing up the fence. We did most of the fence last year, but there was a place where we had a lot of high-growth grass, and you really couldn't, you know, see that there was a landfill on the other side, but we're gonna finish that fence up. We had folks out there cleaning up a lot of debris and trees off the junior track and moving that to a pile that we have towards the back of the junior track. We've got all the hay bales moved. We had hay bales delivered this week. We had someone who made a nice donation of twenty-three hay bales, so we'll get those distributed to the, around the track. We took a bit of a hit on the flood, but nowhere near as, as much as Willow Park. We got a lot of dirt removed, which left rock behind. That doesn't bother me, but I think that bothers some riders, so we wanna get that fixed and try to get some dirt there and get some grooming. We have some money raised for renting equipment, not as much as we'd like, but we've got something to get that started. So, we're trying to get it open. We've got a list from the city of what we need to do from a minimal standpoint to get it open. So, we're working, working hard. I hesitate to give a date. Maybe NMA is a conservative guess.
I just wanted to know where you were and thank the volunteers for their effort. It's all done on a volunteer basis. There's no city money expended in this endeavor to get the park cleaned up and ready to run the MX Park. So, you know, thanks to the volunteers that are doing that work. Thank you for your report. Mr. Glendo, do you have a report this evening?
I do, Mr. Mayor. The one thing I wanna talk about before I get into this report is one of the things that make Harrison such a great city are the citizens who partner with us. You know, there's, there's, some of the cities I've lived in, in the past, you know, a lot of people may complain about what's going on, and very few times do they bring solutions. When the Building and Lands Committee met the last time, one of the discussions that was brought up was having a segregation in the dog park for different sizes of pets. Mary reached out to me via Facebook and on the internet about some of her concerns, and one of the things that we talked about, you know, very quickly was budget, and I was like, "I'll need to get back with you to see if we have anything in the budget." And what she did immediately was say, "Look, we have a problem. Let me come up with a solution." And that's what we're looking for, you know, in our city, and that's what makes our city as graded as it is. We're willing to not only put in sweat equity, but we're willing to roll up our sleeves and say, "If there's a problem, how can I fit in and how can I help bring, bring some, a solution to the table?" On top of that, how do I, how do we do this and not tax our budget? One thing we've heard about, you know, several times tonight was the cost of many projects. We have projects like the, the motocross park that is funded with volunteer help and resources, and, and Mary has, has brought up a, a proposal, and we are actually getting some proposals back tomorrow. Jim Leslie, we're expecting him in the morning to see what that would cost us, and what we would like to do is, Mary has proposed a, an event that I'd like to get on the, on the agenda, and we will write up the, the proposal on that to see about using some of the facilities here to throw a pet, a pet festival.
So, what has happened is...
Excuse me. Could you come up here, 'cause nobody can hear you except us. People don't like to speak in front of crowds, but you're only gonna be...
My husband, I would never get on TV again.
It's, oops.
Again?
Excuse me, honey. I love you. As some people know, grand pets are as important as grandchildren, and our youngest daughter moved away to Georgia, and the only way I can get her to back is to hold her pug hostage. So, if I'm taking care of her pug, we do not have a fenced-in area. Also, he's being very respectful, and he does not want to do his business in our yard. He will only do it at the dog park. So, I took him up there so he could run around. Unfortunately, our first experience was, he got a little skittish. He had some large dogs who just wanted to play. There was nothing wrong or anything. So, as I'm sitting there and we're discussing this, Bailey and I, a fencing company pulled up. So, I asked him what he measured out and kinda got some ideas on how much this would cost. So, after I spoke to Urbano by messenger, so my first situation is, what can we do to separate the big and the little, and could it be by just using a fence? There's different ways they were talking. The one gentleman wanted to go through one way, make an extra separate. I looked at the Aurora Dog Park, which is perfect to ours. All we need to do is bring one fence out and around the big tree, then both dogs, sized dogs can get to the water. So, the problem was a fence. The next problem is, I know the Building and Lands Committee has no budget. The city of Harrison's already taxed enough. There are enough people that, as I put it on Facebook, onto the Pause Connection, what can I do to help? What can I do to help? And it wasn't just the residents. It was people who have businesses that have to do with the animals in the city. So, I, as I explained to him, we need the fence, but we need the money. So, I decided to volunteer and do something like a pet festival. And in this festival, it would bring information and a way to fundraise. To make sure I had enough information for you on the update, one of the biggest problems was, how are we gonna do this monetarily? I'm an accountant. I am the former tax commissioner of the city, so I know how your auditing works with the city. And as a result, it's not gonna work for me to put it in my account. There's too much liability on my part, and it's not gonna work for me to have checks written to the city and you write me checks. So, I came up with another solution. Because I'm an accountant, I have the paperwork to incorporate Greater Harrison Pet Club, and therefore, we would be a nonprofit, and we could continue on, or somebody else could continue on with education and things. But then, we would be a nonprofit, because one of the things I found in researching, trying to get information for you, is the city of Harrison only allows nonprofits to use the building for a meeting, and that's only Girl Scouts and Boy Scouts and rec. If you wanna use the facility, you have to be an athletic club. So, then, I didn't know where were we gonna meet, how are we gonna set up. Harrison Township came through. Tom Lozycamp, thank you, Tom, said, "You can use our civic center." So, with your permission, if you agree that we could have a fence put up, if you agree that it's okay to have a pet festival with the understanding that we will incorporate as a nonprofit before collecting monies, if you agree to all those things, then we have a meeting May fourteenth. SPCA's bringing their mobile unit. The veterinarian is bringing her shot thing. We have the canine coming for an exhibition, and we also have been offered four fire hydrants for a painting contest by anyone in the community, and we would like to put these painting fire hydrants in the dog park so the dogs can use them.
I love it.
If that's okay with you.
So, Mary, I think, I think it's a great idea. Like, no kidding, it is, and I think it has awesome potential. But I'm concerned about the time it's gonna take you to get the nonprofit. The only reason why I say this is...
I've done it. I can do it within an hour.
I understand that, but the district, like, we went on and on, and I don't know if it was because...
Totally different. This is a pet club. I've already, I have a nonprofit myself.
So, you don't need a board and bylaws and...
I can get a board. I just get my husband and my daughter as a board.
So, 'cause that would be my suggestion, Mayor, is if it's here...
Somebody'd like to be on it.
Well, if it's here, my suggestion was, as I was thinking about it since we talked over the weekend, is it, does it make sense this year to run it through the mayor's fund? Just because everything's already set up. You already have a board and everything else.
We would not be able to do it through the mayor's fund because of the way that their incorporation articles read. So...
A club's totally different.
I think, I think what Mary's proposing is, is a very viable solution. I wanna keep it separate and independent of the city, because they may decide to do projects not on city property in the future.
Right.
And if we begin intermingling their organization with city organization, that can become problematic. I, I think that we need to sit down for just a little bit. I see you've got a date that you'd like to do it. You're, you're getting everything, everything going together. Yeah. My information is on the webpage. The best way to get me is to call my cellphone, which is on the webpage, or email me, and we'll set up a date and sit down and talk about this in the real near future. Next week is best for me. This week, I've pretty booked up. But, and we can sit down and talk about getting this all arranged so that, you know, the use of the grounds isn't a problem. We just have to get everything coordinated so that we have it scheduled. We know what you're gonna be doing. You understand what our requirements are. We'll get that all ironed out, and, you know, as far as putting the fence up, you'll have to get a, a good contractor and a permit, and the fact that it's going on city grounds, we can waive the permit fee, because it's gonna actually be an improvement to our property. We would be paying ourselves. Your organization would be paying us, but it'd be an improvement to our property. So...
And we do have a quote coming in. Jim, it's first thing in the morning, I believe. You're expecting the quote?
And also, I'm finding out the quote depends on how we wanna do it. The quote we got was for the old plant, which was twenty-seven hundred dollars.
Yep. I told Jim that as well.
You know, we're probably a month away from fence, because you're not having your fundraiser till the tenth. So, we're at least a month away from fence. So, we've got plenty of time for that. We need to iron out all the small details. Sounds like most of the big ones have been taken care of.
And I'd like to be a part, you know, if you need me to be there to help answer questions or be a part of that. I'll make myself available.
Well, thank you.
Mary, I have to compliment you two for your, your effort. I'm mowing the grass Saturday, and like, Mary shows up at my house. This is a lady that's determined to get stuff done, and I was really impressed with that, although until tonight, I wasn't quite sure I got the concept of a pet festival. When you left, I had this image of my former Cocker Spaniel sitting at the Texas Hold'em table with a Budweiser at the pet festival, and...
That's what we're gonna have, don't you know?
I was trying to picture what you were gonna do, but I really sincerely mean it was awesome for you to be able to, to come up with an idea, to try to get something done, and then to personally go around and nail down every elected official that you could find. That's a rare trait, so hats off to you.
I found Mike, because I found out he was at the motocross.
You should've told me how to, gave you, how to take... You should've told me, I'd have gave you, I'd have took you to him.
And Urbano walked me down to Mark's house, 'cause nobody knows where Mark lives.
Yeah, we do.
But I do wanna say kudos to Cindy because
I know where he lives.
Every person I talked to on the way, the first thing they said was, have you talked to Cindy?
And I laughed, I was cleaning, I said, oh my gosh, my husb...
And they didn't know where you were.
My husband said, honey, are you expecting someone? And I stopped, like, I don't know, who knows? And so, I come down and it was cleaning day, we have a lot of cleaning days with boys, but the point is, it was funny, 'cause I felt like, when I first came on the porch, I'm like, 'cause you know, you're like a wreck, you know, I'm like, well, what you see is what you get, that's what it is. But no, I do appreciate it. And looking, I went in the house with the paperwork and I sat down, my husband was in there, and I said, you know what, this is something, like, you know, I couldn't, I couldn't wrap my mind around it either initially, but then when I went in and read through and just kind of, yeah, there's a lot of moving parts with every event, of course, that, that we do, whether it's with the rec or the district, I mean, I think, and I love that you have a lot of the, my initial questions already answered, 'cause when you started talking, I was like, and you were like, there's the answer, okay. And I applaud you for that, because like I said, everyone thinks that events just happen, you know? That's not, that's far from the truth, so, a lot of planning.
The cherry on top are the fire hydrants.
Yeah, that's gonna be cool. Oh, they're gonna get, they're gonna get a workout in that.
They will, yeah.
Dog park, yeah.
Industrial paint.
For sure, yeah. Anyway, thank you, Mary.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And, Mr. Mayor, the final thing, I don't know if we've, we've yet said it, but wanted to welcome Sidney Murray as their, the new reporter, I don't know if we've done that yet, but welcome. And, you know, the girls', girls' basketball team, rock stars, rock stars.
You're biased.
I'm biased, absolutely biased, but I'm telling you, those girls, their character, their work ethic, their integrity outweighs what they're doing on the court. So, I'm glad we were able to get them here to recognize them and, and to give them a taste of what city government looks like as well. So, that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Mayor, before going into executive session, I have two quick things. One is, I don't know if everybody got this questionnaire from the Ohio Gas Association, the Department of Transportation wanted the city to complete a survey
Yes.
Relative to the guest, has anybody dealt with that?
I filled mine out.
I filled mine out.
Okay, so, we didn't have a, we don't have a designated person here to do that? They want everybody to fill one of these out?
Senate, they're, they're like surveying elected officials, find out what your level of understanding is.
Okay.
That's how they gauge if they need to do more community interaction.
Okay. And then the last thing, there was a, a notice that came through on composting for people in the community that are interested in composting. There are two, two seminars remaining in 2018. There's one on May 1st at 7:00 PM in the East End and there's another one on May 10th at 7:00 PM in Deer Park. I have the phone number up here if anybody's interested. It's a one-hour presentation on how to do composting in your backyard and do it properly. That's all I have.
This time we'll return to executive session, thank you.